Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 12, 2020 Meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13, and will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today would be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For all public hearings, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There will be no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks them a question. For general use district zoning request, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. The petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property. For special use district zoning request, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of the agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken by the planning board concerning these items are recommendations that will be considered by the elected bodies during their review of the request. Before addressing the planning board today, please give a name, address, and ZIP code for the record. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the February 13 and February 27 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Brown, second. Oh, okay. Mr. Stillman. All those in favor?
You can call me Jack.
You know, it's messed up today since our normal... All those opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Now, I'll call on Mr. Corley to review the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, members of the board. The first item on the consent agenda today is B3, which is case W3432. It is a request to rezone about .44 acres from RMUS to NBS. This is at the southeast corner of South Main Street and Barber Street. The view of the subject property on the left, looking south along South Main Street. And then this is a view of some commercial property that's across the street from the subject property. The site plan shows an existing commercial building to be expanded, small parking lot to the rear of that building. Down in the corner, you can see an example of some elevations that are going to be on the building expansions. One additional condition for this request was that freestanding signage be allowed only along South Main Street. Otherwise, the site plan meets UDO requirements and staff recommends approval.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Comments? Someone would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to remind you all that you'll need to make two motions with each of the cases. The first motion is for consistency with the comprehensive plan, and then the second motion will be your recommendation to the city council or the county board of commissioners. I apologize.
Smith, you want to do that over?
Yes. I move the planning board find the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All those in favor, is there a second? All right, second by Mr. Stillman. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous.
Then I make a motion that the planning board approve the case 3432.
Motion by Ms. Smith, is there a second? Second by Mr. Seagres. Any comments? All those in favor? Oppose, the same sign. That's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the consent agenda is case B4F1593. It's a request to rezone a little more than seven and a half acres from RS40 to RS20S. This is on the east side of Lassiter Road, across from Carousel Drive, just on the edge of Clemensville Municipal, or I'm sorry, Clemens Municipal Limits. This is a photo of the subject property looking north along Lassiter Road. The subject property is to the right. And then this is another view of the subject property along Lassiter Road. This is a planned residential development, a PRD, with some lots left outside of it. It shows the required buffers and open space. We got some feedback from Clemens. They said that it is consistent with their comprehensive plan. Water and sewer service are available out here, and it's generally compatible with surrounding development pattern. Staff has recommended approval of this case.
No one has signed up in opposition. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion?
I'm approving.
Okay, is there a motion by Mr. Stillman?
Could I ask a question? I'm sorry. Mr. Corley, I had a question before we proceed to that. The three lots that are left outside the PRD, I just had a question about those. Are those going to be developed as single home sites, or could they be further redeveloped in larger subdivisions?
So, those sites can only be developed for the uses that would be approved with this special use rezoning request, and right now they're only requesting single-family and PRD. So if they're outside of the PRD, you can only build houses on them.
But they could be subdivided into more than one lot. Is that correct?
They would have to meet the minimum lot size requirements.
That would have to come back before county commissioners because of the site plan.
These are part of the S zoning, and so it's 17 lots that are approved, and those three larger lots are 15, 16, and 17. So any further subdivision would have to be a modification to the S plan.
Okay, thank you. And the other question had to do with the Yegkin River watershed regulations, and what you said in the staff report was that this complied with that because it's using the built-upon area... It complied on the basis of built-upon area. So I'm assuming that that would also apply to those three lots?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Stillman. If I could...
You need to read the motion. If I could correct, if you don't mind. I'd like to move the planning board find the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Favor.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
And I move that the planning board recommend approval of F1593.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Stillman. Second by Mr. Brown. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the consent agenda is case B5W3433. This is a zoning conversion for currently zoned AG in the county property that was recently annexed. This is to convert that AG from county zoning to city zoning. It's six acres north of Patsy Drive. The subject property is highlighted here on the screen in yellow. There really is nothing to analyze here. The city recently annexed this property into its municipal limits, and it just needs to be converted before the 30-day deadline. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Does someone want to make a motion?
I move the planning board find the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Stillman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous.
I move the planning board recommend approval of W3433.
Motion by Mr. Stillman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the consent agenda is B6, case W3434. This is a request to rezone 2.82 acres from LB and HBS to GBS. The property is on the east side of Peters Creek Parkway, just south of Bridgeton Road. This is a photo of the subject property. This is the westernmost portion of the subject property, looking northward toward Bridgeton Road. And then this is the easternmost portion of the subject property, also looking northward toward Bridgeton Road. The site plan shows two separate storage buildings. Parking is provided at the smaller building on the western side of the subject property, closest to Peters Creek Parkway. Access is provided through existing private drives off of Bridgeton Road and Peters Creek Parkway. The private access off Peters Creek Parkway is also known as Cleaner World Drive. These are building elevations that were submitted by the petitioner. These are elevations for the smaller building. And then these are the elevations that were submitted for the larger building. One thing that I do want to add something to that's different from what you saw in your report is this eastern elevation of the larger building. The petitioner has proposed to add faux windows on the second level of that building in addition to the landscaping that was shown on the site plan. So that elevation will be different when it goes to the city council next month. Some of the extra conditions or special conditions that were proposed or recommended for this request, heavy-duty concrete apron at the driveway from Peters Creek Parkway, that's Cleaner World Drive, a payment in lieu for the required improvements to Peters Creek Parkway, which is sidewalk, one monument sign with a maximum height of six feet and 36 square foot copy area, and then that extra condition to revise the eastern elevation of the larger building on the eastern portion of the property to add windows to the second level. The site plan meets all the UDO requirements and staff recommends approval.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Motion?
Thank you.
I move that the planning board find the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Seagres, is there a second?
I have a question in between those.
Yeah, second by Mr. Stillman, and there any further discussion?
Mr. Corley, that faux windows on the east elevation, so they're going to make a sort of a faux second floor? Is that what's going to be?
No, this larger building is a two-story building.
Oh, it is a two-story building?
Yes. The smaller building is one-story, closest to Peters Creek Parkway, and then the larger building in the rear.
Those two-story all the way along, not just following the topography?
Right.
Right. Okay. The other thing, did you mention the access from the other road into, between these two buildings?
The private drive from Bridgeton Road.
Is that from Bridgeton?
Yeah, from Bridgeton Road, and then the private drive.
That's one entrance, and then the other entrance is from Peters Creek.
Correct.
Which is a right turn-in only, or?
Correct.
There?
Yep.
And so people will go in there and then go up to Bridgeton Road and come out, and they can cross across there. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
There's a motion, second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, on the second condition, if we could have that with a condition that with the revised conditions as part of the approval motion.
Okay. I move that the planning board recommend approval of W3434 with the condition?
With the revised condition.
With the revised condition. That's motion by Mr. Seagres.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any further discussion?
You got it wrong.
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the consent agenda is B7, case W3435. This is a request to rezone 2.42 acres from RS7 and GB to IPS. This is on the north side of Goldfloss Street, between Vargrave Street and Glendale Street. This is a view of the subject property from a cross, Goldfloss Street, and then another view of an abandoned commercial building on the subject property. This would be demolished with the proposed development, which I'll show you on the next slide. Their site plan shows the construction of a new cafeteria. The overall request will essentially unify the school's campus. This is the campus of Carter G. Woodson School. The overall request will unify the school's campus under IP zoning. And then this specific site plan shows construction of a new cafeteria without modifying any other aspects of the existing site. Some special conditions with this site, that commercial building that I showed you earlier is historic, and there would be a recommended condition to photo document that building prior to grading or demolition. There would be a condition to provide sidewalk along Goldfloss Street to connect to the cafeteria and to connect to Vargrave Street, which has sidewalk. And then another condition that would restrict electronic message signage along Vargrave Street or Glendale Street, so they could only have an electronic message board sign along Goldfloss Street. Staff recommends approval. The site plan meets all UDO requirements.
Thank you. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this request? Seeing that, I declare the public hearing closed. Do you have a question for Mr. Corley?
Yeah. The building's historical. Are there any architectural details or structures within it that need to be saved as well or offered to people to be saved?
Within the commercial building that's going to be demolished?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of.
Has the HRZ staff reviewed that?
They have.
And so they didn't come up with anything that needs like window sashes, door frames, anything like that? Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right, in this case, would someone like to make a motion?
I move the planning board find the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
It's a motion by Mr. Stillman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, the same sign. It's unanimous.
I move the planning board recommend approval of W3435.
Motion by Mr. Stillman.
Does it need any special conditions on them?
This one does not.
Okay, thank you.
You like the second?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, the same sign. That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last item on the consent agenda today is item C1, which is a planning board review item 2021. It's a seven-lot PRD on 21.11 acres at the northern terminus of Chatham Farm Road. Because this is a subdivision review for a planned residential development, staff in the planning board are looking for compliance with the UDO requirements for subdivisions. Staff has found that this site plan, this is the proposed site plan, staff finds that this site plan meets all requirements for PRDs and subdivisions in the UDO. We recommend approval.
And just a reminder, this is not a public hearing item, and this is not dependent upon a consistency statement.
Okay. We'd like to make a motion.
I recommend approval.
Motion by Mr. Stillman.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Donigan. Second by Ms. Donigan. All those in favor? Oppose, the same sign. Thank you.
And Gary's going to come up and do the next.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your next case is zoning docket W3430, and you may remember this was continued from both your January and February meetings, so action is required on this case today. The petitioner is Everly Farms LLC, Bill Ebert and Janet Ebert. Site is 8.22 acres, located on the northeast corner of Silas Creek Parkway and Ebert Street, and it is a special use rezoning request from RS9, single-family residential, to RM12S, multifamily residential for those multifamily uses that are listed there, but the site plan is specifically for townhouses. The zoning map showing the subject property there, highlighted in yellow. It's primarily undeveloped, but there are remnants of a former farm that was there, and it actually contains a historic building, the Ebert House, and petitioners have agreed to a condition similar to the other case that that building would be photo documented before any removal. It's surrounded mostly by a single-family residential zoning, across Ebert Street, RS9, to the north, RS9 as well, single-family home and Twin City Bible Church. Further to the east, you have more residential zoning there. And across Silas Creek Parkway and southeast of the site, you have multifamily zoning. Across Silas Creek Parkway, you have office zoning. The property is located within the pink urban neighborhood, suburban growth management area two, where increased densities are recommended when done in a contextually sensitive manner, considering the scale and land uses surrounding the properties. And it's also located on Silas Creek Parkway Growth Corridor. This is an aerial image showing the subject property there. There is a small stream on the eastern portion of the site, which the site plan works around. There is a small buffer yard encroachment along that stream. They will have to obtain a variance for that. The full eastern portion of the site there is, as you'll see on the tree save, on the site plan, is shown for their tree save area. A couple of images taken on-site. This is looking northeast into the subject property there at the intersection of Ebert and Silas Creek Parkway. Looking east on Silas Creek Parkway, the subject property's to the left. There are actually two bus routes that serve the site along Silas Creek Parkway, which makes it a good location for multifamily zoning. The petitioners have agreed to a condition to provide a payment in lieu of for future sidewalk installation along Peters Creek, Silas Creek Parkway. That will be a city project. That project is not of an imminent timeframe, but it is an ordinance requirement, so because it's not immediately in schedule to do, we came to the resolution of providing a payment in lieu of that amount. And they've also agreed to provide an easement for a future bus shelter. This is on Ebert Street, looking south. Apologize for the dark, dark quality of this. The site is to the left. See the recently installed city sidewalk there along Ebert Street, about where the connection, the new driveway connection will be. It's located within the southwest area plan of Winston-Salem, which shows different color recommendations for different land uses. Yellow would be single-family residential, blue would be institutional, red would be commercial, and the subject property is shown there in brown, and that's immediate density residential. And an average of about 10 units per acre is what the area plan recommends on the site. So the request is consistent with the area plan recommendation. Looking more closely at the site plan here, you see the building shown in orange. These are five- and six-unit, two-story townhouse buildings. So really, from a scale standpoint, they fit in fairly well, even with the residential homes around there. They've internalized the parking, just one access point onto Ebert Street, good internal circulation. And as I mentioned earlier, on the far right where the green is shown, that's their tree save area in between the developed portion of the site and where that stream is located. They are showing no access points again on Silas Creek Parkway, and to kind of help the development to blend in a little bit with the surrounding development pattern, they have provided a three-foot berm and a 20-foot type one buffer yard along Silas Creek Parkway, and that buffer yard, again, on Ebert Street as well. And they've also agreed to provide some enhanced building elevations, which I will show you. These units are inward focusing, inward towards the parking lot, towards the internal circulation. But to dress up the backs of the buildings, they have agreed to provide some enhanced building elevations in addition to that landscaping and berming that I just mentioned. And I mentioned previously that they will provide a payment in lieu for the sidewalk along Silas Creek Parkway. So these are the front elevations that will face inward. The rear elevations, typical rear elevations, typical side elevations, but for the units that front along, that will be oriented inwardly but front along Ebert Street, these will be the enhanced rear elevations, which are really comparable to the front of the buildings, and then the enhanced side elevations along Ebert Street. The request is consistent with the area plan, which again recommends about 10 units per acre. This is just a little bit more than that, 10.8 units per acre, 89 units per acre. This is a total of 89 units. Silas Creek Parkway, as I mentioned, is a growth corridor, and where well-designed, pedestrian-friendly, multifamily development is recommended, which this is consistent with that. The site does include building and parking layout, landscaping treatments, and proposed building elevations, which minimizes the impact to the surrounding properties, which this does. And again, the height and massing of the proposed townhomes are generally comparable with the surrounding development pattern. So staff recommends approval, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements.
Are there questions for staff? All right, Ms. Smith.
Mr. Roberts, if you could put the site plan back up. I was wondering, could you show me where the dumpsters? Are there going to be dumpsters on?
Yes. Oops. Okay. You've got one dumpster there. Can you see that?
Yes.
And the other dumpster is right there.
Okay.
Down a little bit. Right there.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there sidewalks along Ebert?
Yes.
On that side already, existing?
Right.
So they're just putting in a little buffer?
A buffer on the eastern side. They're going to dedicate a little bit more of additional right-of-way along both street frontages, and buffer there where you see the green, the 20-foot type one.
Are there any further questions for staff?
I've got one remark and one question. I would just like to commend the developers. I think they've done a really, really nice design.
Yes.
For this area that will just fit in wonderfully. Question is, because I'm so new, I don't know yet, when a payment in lieu of a public improvement is made, is there a time limit within which that is to be constructed or after which the funds are returned?
I guess there could be. This situation does not have a timeframe on it. It is a requirement prior to their driveway, is a part of their driveway permit.
Yeah.
So I guess theoretically, that money could sit for five or 10 years before that project was constructed. It's kind of hard to predict exactly when this project is going to take place. So right now, it's put with no timeframe.
Could I get a clarification? So that means that the sidewalk will be built when the driveways are built to the project?
No, no. The sidewalk will become part of a larger city project, so just from a uniformity of design, we felt like it was better rather than piecemealing it on this major road to do it all at once.
Yeah, we have that tool in the UDO, because when we know pending projects are coming, it often makes sense to delay, you know, have that, as Gary mentioned, installed as one project rather than have something that's built. It may make designing to that existing infrastructure difficult or challenging. It's better to do it all at one time. That's why we have that payment in lieu option in our ordinance.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Roberts?
I just have one further clarification of what you said. As far as the bus shelter is concerned, is that going to happen immediately, or will that be delayed until the sidewalk is put in?
It's really more a function of when the city, the city now has an easement for which they can place the bus shelter, so that really, when the bus shelter gets placed there, it's kind of up to the city. It won't be on the developer to place the bus shelter there.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
So we do have opposition in this case, so we would go into a public hearing. We're going to declare the public hearing open. As a reminder, each side will have a total of 12 minutes, and there will be no rebuttal period. Proponents in this case are Bruce Hubbard and Steve Causey. So whoever wants to come first? Again, state your name and your address and ZIP code, please.
Sure. Steve Causey, Allied Design, 4720 Kestrel Mill Road, Winston-Salem, 27103. Really not a whole lot I can add to the comments Gary's provided already. We're here to answer any questions, certainly. Felt like we worked diligently with staff. We appreciate the two continuances. Jeff Fanzler and his group in transportation was instrumental in kind of figuring out the payment in lieu of option there, so we appreciate that. Bruce Hubbard is here today to speak if you have any questions of the developer, but I think you've got the summary of the neighborhood outreach efforts, so again, just glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Causey. Any question, Mr. Causey? All right. Mr. Hubbard, would you like to speak?
I'm Bruce Hubbard, at 1598 Westbrook Plaza Drive, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and I'm here to answer questions. And I'm here to answer questions regarding the development process, but we have reached out to the neighborhood. We've had a neighborhood meeting. There was about eight or nine folks in attendance at the neighborhood meeting, and we've also been in communication with the Ardmore Association on the growth development, and we appreciate your support. I'm here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Sorry, Mr. Hubbard, I need your zip code for the record, please.
27103.
Thank you. No one else has signed up in favor? Would anyone else like to speak? There is time left. All right, we do have one opponent, Julie Magnus.
My name is Julie Magnus, 630 Fenimore Street, 27103. And I am glad to hear that there is arrangement to be made for the future sidewalk, curb and gutter along Silas Creek. I guess I do want to throw a question out there. What the cost of that might be today, it might be very different than what the cost is when it is actually put in by the city. And I don't know if the city just absorbs the cost, if it's an overrun and if it's more. I don't know if it's more money, if the developer gets money back. I just wanted to pose that out as a question, and I really appreciate Mr. Stillman for bringing it up. Next, I'd like to say that this is by far a superior plan that has been brought before for this piece of property. It is all residential. The commercial has been eliminated out of this part of the plan, and I do know a lot of effort has been made to make these look more in keeping with the neighborhood setting that the past two legacy plans have always established. I know that this one now is said to be looking forward to 2030 legacy, and we are looking at different types of development in the future. We know we need a lot more infill, and this certainly is a divergent from the existing legacy plans in that there's no transition from multifamily dwellings to single-family dwellings. I think that with the one single-family house now being squeezed between a church expansion and a cell phone tower, that maybe that property has become less and less desirable to being single-family. But I just want to take note that this is a divergent from the existing legacy plans and really looking forward to the future. My one real objection to this is, you know, this is named Ardmore Commons. Commons would make you think there is common area, and there is no common area. There's this very small dog park, if you've got a very small dog, which is great, but there's no place, this is going to be a set of units for single or couples. I don't see this being something that's ever going to accommodate children, because there's no place for children to be. The tree save would be an ideal place for that to happen, except it was a piece of property purchased that fronts off Miller Street and is disconnected from the actual development. And visually, if you guys have been by there, it's really an eyesore. It looks like a bunch of trees have fallen down, nobody's ever cleaned up the property. It's not a quality tree save as it fronts Miller Street, and I wish that this plan could address that in some way. You want to save trees, but there's got to be something besides stumps and fallen over trees to save as well. So my real objection, and this comes up not just with this plan, but with a lot of plans that the city has, where the tree save isn't really a part of the development. So it offers nothing visually, and it offers nothing functionally for this development. Ardmore Commons, it has no common space. So those are my comments, and I thank you for my time. I really appreciate the hard work that's gone into this. It's been a very difficult piece of property to develop, because some of it just isn't developable. So it's kind of hard to, to look at the square footage and the return. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magnus. Any questions or comments for Ms. Magnus? All right, would anyone else like to speak in opposition?
Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Any further discussion? If not, is there?
Is this an opportunity for one follow-up question?
Yes.
Thank you. When we were hearing from, from Mr. Causey, there was mention of a payment in lieu for sidewalk. There has been prior discussion about sidewalk and curb and gutter, and Ms. Magnus just also mentioned curb and gutter. I would just like to ask for that clarification.
Yeah, let's, let's bring- It does include curb and gutter. That's part of the condition, yes.
Let's hear from the, you might want, we might want to invite Jeff Fanzler from Winston-Salem DOT up to talk a little bit about sort of the timing and functionality of how that payment gets made, how long it's kept, and sort of the cost aspect of it.
And what it's for, yeah.
Yeah, what's for sidewalk, curb and gutter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Fanzler, Winston-Salem DOT, representing this building, 100 East First Street. Just a couple of comments on the payment in lieu. It does represent payment in lieu of curb and gutter and sidewalk along this frontage, and let me tell you why. Couple reasons. One, our transportation plan calls for those improvements along this frontage, and so the UDO gives us the authority to require the payment in lieu for both of those, curb and gutter and sidewalk. In addition, you have heard mention of a project, a city project. 2018 bond referendum did allocate the funds for sidewalk, curb and gutter along this frontage, and of course, it extends essentially from Lachlan all the way to Bolton. So a good chunk tying in some missing gaps with curb and gutter and sidewalk treatment along the corridor, directly involving the frontage of this site today. And so, as you've heard previously mentioned, it's much better for us. We are currently engaged with the consultant to design this. That is ongoing today, so those comments are not really no win, but it is under contract. We do, we are actively pursuing this project, so in the design phase, to go right to construction immediately after. The biggest piece of the puzzle, it's, it's been, the majority of it has been funded, so we are past the funding hurdle, so it will go to construction once it is designed. And so, as mentioned, we did negotiate with the developer for that fee, and that is done and should be tied to the permitting before they get the driveway permit. I believe that's how the conditions wrote. So that funding will be collected prior to that driveway permit, and that's how we will collect that fund and apply it to our project. I hope that answered your questions, and I'm happy to answer any further.
Are you all looking at pedestrian crosswalks?
We are, at both Miller and Ebert.
Okay.
There will be ped signalized crosswalks as a part of that project.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any of your further questions or discussion? If not, is someone ready to make a motion?
I move that the planning board find the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
That's motion by Mr. Stillman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, same sign, that's unanimous?
I move that the planning board recommend approval of W.30430.
Motion by Mr. Stillman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hitts. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous.
I know, Ray. I was trying to hold that one. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, next item on your agenda is zoning docket F.1592. Petitioners JCS Properties North LLC, William Loggins, Susan Loggins, and Billy Moses. Site is 33.91 acres, located on the southwest corner of Robin Hood Road and Metal Arc Drive, and it is a special use rezoning from RS9, single-family residential, to GBS, general business special use, for a mixture of uses. This is the legacy map for this case. It's located within the yellow suburban neighborhoods, growth management area three, on the southern edge of the Metal Arc, Robin Hood Activity Center. Zoning map showing the subject property there in yellow. It is, for the most part, undeveloped. There are a few homes facing Robin Hood Road there on the northern edge of the site. Again, it's currently zoned RS9, it's within the county. You have single-family zoning located within the city of Winston-Salem, directly to the southeast and to the south and southwest. You have at the northern tip of Brookberry Farms, zoned MUS. Further RS9 zoning to the west. The Robin Hood Baptist Church, located directly northwest of the subject property, zoned IP. And then some commercial zoning and MUS zoning for the Robin Hood Village Shopping Center and mixed multifamily development located across Robin Hood. Aerial image showing the subject property again, it's heavily wooded right now. There are two small streams that traverse the southeastern portion of the site and the western edge of the site. Couple of images taken on site. This is from Robin Hood Road looking into the subject property. Also on Robin Hood, Robin Hood Road looking west, the site is to the left. Back on Metal Arc Drive, the site is to the left in the background. This is at the Arbers of Metal Arc entrance, and there's a white truck there, a box truck that you can see. That's about where one of the entrances, one of the three entrances would go. That's the only entrance on the Metal Arc, right there, about where that truck is. Within the Metal Arc, the Arbers at Metal Arc Development, this is Wisteria Drive. The earlier versions of the plan did include a connection here. The subject property is where the trees are located, and the current plan does not include a connection there. Within Brookberry Farms, the subject property is in the background there, again, the wooded area. This is another stub street that goes into the subject property. They're right in between those two homes, that Sweetgrass Lane, and that connection is determined to be not practical. There's a future gas line that will traverse through that area, and due to significant grade, as you can see there in between those two homes, the connection is not practical. Looking at the area plan, at the West Suburban Area Plan update, again, showing subject property in different color. Single-family residential would be yellow, have red for commercial, and different shades of brown for multifamily. Subject property is recommended for high-density residential, 18 units per acre and more. Blue would be the institutional land use recommendations. This area plan was done, specific discussions took place regarding the land use for, recommended for the subject property. We took into account the amount of occupancy of the shopping center across the street, but also primarily the amount of undeveloped commercial zoning already approved as a southeastern portion of Brookberry Farms. Approximately 300,000 square feet of undeveloped, non-residential development has been approved there, kind of just to the north and behind the new Walmart grocery store there that fronts on Country Club, further south of this, near Jamison Park. So that's within the same portion of the county, so that's really the primary reason why commercial was not recommended on, on this subject property, and also the surrounding single-family zoning to the south. This is the site plan. It is for a mixture of uses. It shows red there, commercial, grocery store and anchor, and three other smaller buildings there. The brown buildings would be three-story apartment buildings, about 227 units, about 82,000 square feet of commercials, commercial development there. The little turquoise there along that internal private street, that's the clubhouse. You have stormwater along that stream that I mentioned earlier on the far western portion of the site, and about five and a half acres of tree save area, which is not required, but shown on the plan there along that stream, shown there in green. So that's just a real brief narrative of the site plan. This is a tremendous traffic generator, around 6,000 additional trips per day. They were required to submit a transportation impact analysis. They are showing three access points, one of full access here on Robin Hood Road.
I'm not sure that your mouse can be seen.
That would be a new signalized intersection.
There you go.
Right, right there. So that will be full access. We've got a right-in, right-out, right here at this point, and then a connection on to Metal Arc. This would be a right-in, right-out, and leftover with a median there. So again, a traffic impact analysis was required and submitted. I'm going to turn it over right now to Jeff Fanzler with City DOT to talk a little bit more about the transportation impacts of this request.
Thank you, Gary. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Again, Jeff Fanzler, Winston-Salem DOT, representing this building. Gary did hit the, the high points there. This is a significant traffic generator. There's no secrets there, and significant improvements have, are shown and have been committed to by the, the developer and as, as a result of the traffic impact analysis that was, that was done. So he mentioned 10, 6,000 trips, and I wanted to talk a little bit about what that means. A lot of, independently, this site generates significantly more than 6,000 trips, and so for the element of transparency, that needs to be, needs to be stated. The reason why it's 6,000 new trips, as was indicated, is because, for a couple of reasons. One, the, the internal capture. And so what that means is this is both, both residential and some commercial type development. And so internally, folks that may live or maybe going to one of the other facilities in the proposed development may do another trip to another, another facility in there. So it's captured internally. It's not a new trip that will be headed into there independently. So that's one of the reductions that you see there. In addition, what we call pass-by trips, okay? Pass-by trips is also a critical element to discuss, because Metal Arc, Robin Hood, both fairly significant traffic on those facilities already, and pass-by trip basically discounts some trips, because essentially, the vehicles are already there. They're already on Metal Arc, they're already on Robin Hood, and they may, they're headed home from work, they may stop at, at a restaurant or, or some, something of that nature. So it's, it's called a pass-by trip. Now, just, those are the trips, it's significant, but let's talk about how we intend to handle those, those trips. As indicated, there are three main, now three main access points to the site, two on Robin Hood and one on Metal Arc. Metal Arc is a city facility, Robin Hood is a state facility. So I want to say that because NC DOT has had a lot of involvement in this process, the improvements on Metal Arc, I mean, excuse me, on Robin Hood have been vetted by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. So this is not just a city interest here. Of course, this is state interest as it is their facility, and two of the access points do exit on to a state facility. So one, the access on to Robin Hood across from Oliver Church, that creates the fourth leg of the intersection, so signal improvements will be needed. And of course, they have also provided a three-lane cross-section exiting the site. There will be two exiting and one entering. In addition, I want to make sure we, we understand that there's a median that's being shown. It's kind of covered up by the Robin Hood Road label there, but the median does extend from, on Robin Hood, from Metal Arc all the way to the exit, the signal there at Oliver Church. And so also turn lanes for the facility on Robin Hood Road. So there's some additional elements specific to Robin Hood Road that I want to make sure we, we call attention to, because those are significant improvements that will be essential in mitigating some of the traffic that this site is expected to generate. Furthermore, the right-in, right-out, you see that, that we anticipate a lot of right-out traffic there. If you're head, if you're turning right into the facility, coming from that direction, you're probably going to turn at the signal, under signal control. But again, again, good right-out accommodations there to get back to the signal at Metal Arc. And then lastly, I want to mention the leftover, you heard that term mentioned on, off of Metal Arc. Essentially, what that is, is a treatment that allows both right-in, right-out, and left-in. It does not allow left-out, okay? So that's the, the main prohibitor there, and the reason being, left-out, just you're crossing multiple lanes, and there's a lot of conflict points there. And so staff, given the proximity to the signal, is uncomfortable with allowing a left out of there, so we did work with the developer and the traffic consultant to, to work that into their analysis, to make sure that that is feasible, and how it aligns with the access of Zinfandel, which is just to the south there. And we, we think all that can work, still allow full access at Zinfandel, excuse me, full access at Zinfandel. So again, just a lot of treatments, a lot of improvements, significant improvements that are placed on this development to handle the traffic. All that to say, our review is, is we will find that the improvements that are recommended, this site will be traffic served efficiently. We're going to have some expected delay at, at some of the non-signalized intersections further south on Metal Arc. Those are expected to decrease over time, but again, specific to this site, the improvements shown on all frontages seem to be sufficient for what they are showing and propose. So I'm happy to answer any further questions. I can get into the weeds as much as you want to, but again, any questions that you have, I'm happy to answer for you.
You just spoke about impact further to the south along the Metal Arc. Are there not currently widening plans also underway for that, especially around the schools?
That's correct, yeah, so.
Could you share with us how they will help with this?
Yeah, so you're correct. The city does have a large bond project that will affect the Metal Arc in its entirety, so that includes some widening in select areas, common turn lanes, and of course, significant pedestrian improvements. So those improvements were modeled and taken into consideration. Again, traffic generation of this magnitude will negatively impact regardless of our project, but again, we did model the corridor and all of the improvements that we plan to make, that, all the development and the trends. And again, what's shown here for this site, we will handle this site. We do expect some side street, side street delay at select, side streets along. side street, side street delay at select, side streets along Metal Arc, but again, nothing that is atypical.
Would you expect the schedule for the two projects to coincide?
Good question. I can't speak to the schedule of the developer, I'll let them, I'll let them speak to that, but I can say that we are, we are trying to actively get our project, our project, meaning the city's bond project for widening Metal Arc, out to bid. We're hopeful that that is done sometime before this calendar year closes to get it out to bid, so there's been some changes of the school system and kind of the intent of how we handle traffic around the schools, so we're still trying to work through those elements, and that's putting us a little bit farther behind, but again, it is still the intent to get our, our project, being the city bond project, out to bid before this calendar year.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Fanzler, I just wanted to clarify what you were talking about, the side street delay. So if I heard you correctly, you were saying that even with the widening, you still anticipate some side street delay. So for example, would that mean like Century Oaks? I think that's one of the.
Century Oaks in Heron Ridge, that's what's in the.
So if you're turning left out of one of those streets, you're going to have delay because of the backup of cars getting in, is that?
It's not so much the backup, it's more of the gap acceptance. It's more of finding an acceptable gap to turn out.
Because it's generating that additional traffic?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of questions. Have you changed the speed limit on this end of Metal Arc yet?
We have not.
Because I think that was a suggestion back when Brookberry was asking for this, and they had sort of a hill there coming over, and it's 45, are you anticipating doing that?
Not to my knowledge, and not with the project. I will have to follow up. That is not in the works that I know of, to change the speed limit on Metal Arc.
Even with this gap problem?
That's correct.
How would you get from this shopping center across to the other shopping center, which seems to be a very, a pattern of shoppers? They, they go to an area, they want to shop over here, want to shop here, have dinner there, whatnot.
Yeah, it's a great question. So I'm, I'm, I'm an advocate for traffic signals, that's where I started my career, so I'm going to encourage folks leaving this site to go to the other site, to exit via the traffic signal at Oliver Church, to head, take a right and head down to the traffic signal there at, at Robin Hood and Metal Arc, and take two protected movements. So you'll turn right out at Oliver Church, and then get into the left turn lane to turn left into the shop, into the shopping center across Robin Hood.
Or they could drive straight on Oliver Church and turn right at the apartments.
They could.
Okay.
So we didn't want another five points?
Absolutely not.
When you're doing your traffic study, did you factor in the increased traffic that may be using Robin Hood to the Beltway?
We did.
And how many trips was that, that you were seeing that would pick up along there?
Along there, meaning.
Along Robin Hood Road as they head to the Beltway, because that's going to be one of the exit entrances, right? A little further up, Robin Hood?
It's a full interchange.
Full intersection.
You're talking about the Beltway? Yes, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about another entrance from the site. Yeah, the Beltway does have a full interchange, just a little bit off the screen here, but yes, it was modeled to go there. Again, this site has, we looked at it in AM and PM peak of traffic, and again, most of the, the trips are via Robin Hood, so both are split pretty evenly going east and west on Robin Hood, just depending on where they're going, but AM, about 400 trips entering and exiting the site, and then PM, about 490, again, split pretty evenly, both east and west.
Mr. Chairman, I think we still have to finish the staff presentation. Correct? We may want to go ahead and do that, hold the public hearing, and then come back for questions.
Thank you. If you wanted him to explain the traffic pattern.
Good, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fanzler. Back to the site plan and the overall request. Staff does recognize that there is a significant multifamily component, and that's certainly consistent with the area plan. We would prefer to see a little bit more of a sensitive transition from lower-density single-family to the south, maybe into duplexes, townhouses, and then the larger three-story and three-story, four-story splits, maybe along Metal Arc Road. But again, the commercial component is not consistent with the plan. We'd also like to see a connection there at Wisteria. Certainly, one of the best ways to address traffic issues is to connect the streets, that really absorbs and diffuses traffic and gives people multiple itineraries. So also, I want to just mention briefly, in addition to a slightly changed transportation condition, which I will show you on your screen, we are in agreement to some changes to signage conditions. I, I'm showing you three yellow dots there along the two public road frontages, so those are where the three signs will go, so I just want to mention that after these conditions here, in these conditions. So the first one is priority grading permit. This is a third bullet down under driveway number one, and so what we have agreed to City DOT and the developer is that this would no longer be an exclusive left, as you, as you see, which is stricken through, but a shared through-left turn lane with exclusive, exclusive right turn, as Jeff mentioned, so that's the change there in the condition. Please note that if you do recommend approval on the request. The other conditions are in regard to signage. So we basically moved the larger sign to the corner of Metal Arc and Robin Hood, where the most, the biggest focal point would be, that would be a 15-foot tall sign with 100 square feet there, and again, at the corner of Metal Arc and Robin Hood, we are fine with that. That was previously shown as an eight-foot with 50 square feet. We had initially the larger sign over to the eastern, western portion of the site, and that would now be a six-foot sign with 75 square feet of area. That's at the full access signalized intersection there in the far western portion. We are fine with that as well. And then the petitioner has requested a smaller monument sign for the out parcel that's closest to the arbors at Metal Arc, six-foot tall and 36 square feet, which is a standard out parcel sign, and we are fine with that as well. The petitioner has submitted building elevations for the multifamily, as you can see there, and they've also submitted some conditions which are in your report for the commercial portion. So in summary, the commercial component is not supported by the area plan. The multifamily component is, is consistent with the West Suburban Area Plan update. It does represent a significant amount of new, high-turnover traffic to the area and the lack of connectivity to adjacent property owners. Adjacent property, particularly Wisteria is a concern, and it locates commercial zoning directly adjacent to single-family residential, which is not recommended in the area plan. So the staff recommends denial, and the site plan does meet UDA requirements, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any further questions for Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, Mr. Roberts? Are you still using a connectivity index to analyze projects, and did you do that here?
For residential subdivisions, we do.
Okay, but not for, not for commercial?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Any further? Thank you.
Sure.
So we do have proponents in favor of this, and we're going to open a public hearing now. Again, 12 minutes per each side. We have Mr. Stemmel and Mr. Davis, if you approach.
Thank you.
If you've got a junk drive.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, Doug Stemmel with Stemmel Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem 27101. Happy to be here today representing Adams Property Group. I'll start out by saying that we're very pleased that we've made significant progress with the neighborhoods to the south of us. We had good neighborhood input, and since the time that the staff report was done, we've made a number of agreements with the neighborhood and concessions, and I think the majority of the folks that are here today with both the arbors at Metal Arc and Brookberry are supportive of this proposal as we have it proposed and with the added conditions that we're adding. So, let's see. Want to start out where Gary was before, so you see the dark brown area. So this is proposed for, as you noticed from the West Suburban Area Plan, over 18 units an acre. So that's very intense multifamily development, and what we're proposing is 227 apartments instead, and a much better buffer transition. If you look to the, if you can see my cursor, can you see it or not?
No, not yet.
Just got to click on it or what? Had to click it three times.
There we go. There it goes.
Okay, thank you. So, let's see, the arbors at Metal Arc is right here, and this is part of Brookberry, and this is part of Brookberry down at the bottom. So all of these neighborhoods immediately adjacent to this, 18 units an acre, and we wanted to do a better transition zone to that 18 units an acre that has been in the high-density plan for some time, and I'm going to show you how we address that. Looking at this plan, I call this a transitional buffer. The green area is 13.37 acres, and we worked very diligently to create a buffer and a transition that we think is a better transition of open space adjacent to the neighbors than if we were to put attached housing immediately adjacent to the neighbors. And I believe the majority of the neighborhood feels the same way. What we've done is we've been able to do that by building a compact grocery store-driven retail here, so it's really 10 acres pushed away from the neighborhood of commercial, another 10 acres of apartments that we made very compact and pushed away from the neighborhood, and then 13 acres of transitional buffer to the neighborhood. I call it a 10, 10, 13, so we worked very hard to transition this project to be sensitive to the neighborhood. As usual, we do a lot of neighborhood outreach. We invited 128 households, the site's in the middle. We invited everybody in the red area, in addition to inviting the HOA through Facebook and the rest of Brookberry to our neighborhood meeting. They all showed up in the snow, and 39 households attended that meeting. We had good discussion, and I'm happy to say that a lot of the discussion we had resulted in changes to our plan after that meeting, and I believe we're addressing the majority of the concerns. A little walkthrough that hasn't been talked about yet is, we have an internal loop road with sidewalks here, and what we're trying to do is create the multifamily to create green space. We moved the clubhouse to this location on access with a grocery store. We have a dog park back here. We have extensive sidewalks everywhere throughout the development, so we feel it's pedestrian-oriented, compact development. I will say that the grocery store here is far smaller than what's across the street at Robin Hood Village. You hear a lot of comments questioning, why do you need another grocery store? Well, number one, somebody's interested in the site as a grocery store. All we have is a grocery store plus a limited amount of retail shops. We're 40% of the size of what's across the street, and Robin Hood Village has a vacancy rate 6.6%, which is well below the national standard. I will point out where the red X's are in meeting with the neighborhood. This is Sweetgrass Trail. Gary talked about this, there's a significant, significant gas line here, connectivity was not possible. That put more stress, and what we think, along with the neighborhood, Wisteria is right here, that, that's an undue burden to all of a sudden take all of Brookberry and funnel it through one access point, is really not fair to the neighborhood. There are a lot of homes in Brookberry, and taking it out one access point does not make sense, and the neighborhood agrees with us, and we agree with them on that point. Here are some changes as a result of the neighborhood meeting. I'll walk you through these quickly. We had a neighbor, let me look at this, if I can find my mouse, but number one, to the north, we shifted the building, turned it the other way, and shifted it away from the neighbor to the north at their request, so it would have less impact on them. Number two on the screen, no connection to Sweetgrass Trail. I explained that. We put in a double type-three buffer yard, so you can see two buffers there, one along the southern border, the gas line, and then we agreed after the neighborhood meeting to add an additional type-three buffer yard all the way through here, so that as you go up, it's a double row to help reduce the impact. You'll also notice that there are no, no buildings, if you extend the line of the property line up, there are no buildings directly behind these existing nice homes that are in here, and we intentionally designed it that way so that the buildings don't front on that area and we have the least impact as possible. Number three, for reasons I just stated, we do not want to connect Wisteria in agreement with the neighborhood. We also agreed to extensive Exhibit A that is in your conditions in your booklet, and it states the double buffer yards that we're putting in place, and I'll touch base on that in a minute. And one of the key elements that we did, we, before, we had the clubhouse here, we decided to shift it up in a more compact manner internally in the site, and moved it completely away from the neighborhood, leaving extensive buffers, existing trees all the way through here, and where there aren't existing trees, we added and doubled the buffer everywhere else. This is the Exhibit A that's in your packet that explains these five conditions. I'm not going to read every one of them in detail, but I'll hit the highlights. Wisteria Drive, no connection, and we've added that in. Enhanced 40-foot buffer, the size of the trees, the Nellie Stevens Holly, we worked the neighborhood to work that out, agreed to a three-foot berm. Number three, we added an enhanced buffer, a second buffer, that is up higher to change, where the grade change moves up to the road. We put in an eight-foot decorative black fence as well, so we have a double buffer terraced up to make a better transition in the neighborhood, and we worked that condition out with Mr. Ron Davis and the arbors association. The out parcel that was nearest to the arbors, we also worked, there's extensive language here, we reduced the uses, removed child daycare, removed restaurant with drive-through service, removed veterinary services. In other words, anything that has noise outside, we removed that for that out parcel, and you see the list of all the other things. No outdoor amplified music, no, no dining outside. More than likely, that'll be an office building location, and so we worked with the neighbor to put that condition into this proposal, and they also requested a smaller monument sign in number five, so we put a small monument sign with that language. And I know Ron Davis would like to speak in support. We also worked with Brian Borno, who is here today from Brookberry as well, and they've indicated they're both supportive of this development. We think this is a far better alternative to have a transitional buffer of 13.37 acres than putting some form of attached housing against those two existing neighborhoods. So we listened to the neighborhood, we did what they asked us to do, and we think we have a better proposal as a result of that. I'll turn it over to Ron now. Thank you.
Just a little over three minutes.
Okay.
The final, no one with all your challenges. Okay. Okay. I'm Ron Davis. I am the developer of the arbors at Metal Arc. I'm president of the Arbors at Metal Arc Homeowners Association, manager of Metal Arc Developers LLC. I'm a member of the Winston-Salem Home Builders Association and author of the change.org online petition that you have. All of our petitions were based upon a non.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dow, I need your address, please.
Oh, the address is 388 Knollwood Street, number 253, Winston-Salem 27103.
Thank you.
The petitions you have in your package are all based on a, the comments were based on a non-emotional analysis. There's 15 items there that were conflicts, conflicts with their earlier plans, their earlier plans had to do with the UDO and the Robin Hood area plan. You should have all these petitions in your meeting package. Those petitions have continued to collect signatures of oppositional support, and now totaling in excess of 1,000 signatures against the development plan that was in place prior to Thursday, March 5th. So those are, Doug kind of gave you history, it's going back, you know, to last week, what they initially had submitted. You don't have to be a traffic engineer to see that Wisteria, that that would be a shortcut into the center, particularly with a stack of traffic out there on Metal Arc, or in the morning when there's a stack waiting to turn right out, it would be a quick, it's actually a quicker way in and out of that project. That puts the residents there at risk. Those homes are front-load garages. Dr. Manicar, who lives on the corner there and occupies that house that, on Wisteria and Zinfandel, he is here, but he backs out, and the other two homes would back out as well with all that traffic, they would be, you know, at risk. So the. So, the... We... With this, you know, when this thing first hit, we immediately had... We had a couple of lot cancellations, and we've had several home sales that have lost just from the... Just seeing this proposal and its initial form. So, fortunately, we've been able to work with Adams Property Group and Mr. Stimmel and revise the plans of what you're seeing before you tonight. I'd like to compliment them on their willingness to make those changes, and with a minimum of the approval of the site plan changes and additional conditions, as you see on Exhibit A and on the revised site plan they have, we are withdrawing those petitions and recommending approval of the current site plan. We feel like they have created this neighborhood, this transition zone with the buffers and the conditions and the lighting and the elevation changes, and there's a fence in there as well, and that would be protecting our neighborhood as the UDO and the Robin Hood Area Plan recommend. So, we look forward at this point to having some additional shopping opportunities in the area. So, that's obviously, that's, you know, with your approval and with the commissioners, that we would be withdrawing all these petitions in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask a question, Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Yes, I'm sorry.
When you say you're withdrawing, how did you get back with your 1,000 petitioners?
Okay, so if you go online on Change.org, you will see a modification of that. It shows the current site plan, and it basically states this works, that we appreciate your involvement and stay with us until we get, you know, this matter resolved. So, we've done that. We did that several days ago. It's... You can look that up. You'll see that. Obviously, we've been talking, communicating with Brookberry people through Brian Barnau, who is here. He's a resident, lives at the connection between the Arbers, Metal Arc, and Brookberry. And the Home Builders Association, which is a 600-member organization that was backing us, and it's also... We have communicated with them, and they're in agreement. The residents, I've spoken with them, they're in agreement. I've spoken with the home builders, and they are in agreement. We feel like this is a very significant buffer that's going into place. This thing will be about 13 feet high between those two homes, and will give us some... With the conditions that are being placed on that building, you are, in effect, creating a transition zone that is recommended.
Also, when people bought homes in this development, these two sub-streets were part of the plan, correct?
Correct.
And the major difference here is they were going into more dense development, not into retail, right?
That's correct, and Dr. Manikow also, he went downtown and said, "Look, I'm looking at buying and building on this corner a lot, and how does this affect me?" And he was told that they couldn't just come up against the property, it had to be a transition zone, and described that process to him, and that's what we've understood all along. But like I said, they have accommodated us with all these buffers and setbacks in conditions and created that type, and you can see they've also worked with Brookberry, and they've moved that clubhouse. That clubhouse is 40 feet off the back property line of the home builders fundraiser house, the home builders association's fundraiser.
Yep. Okay. Any further questions?
There's 15 seconds.
Okay, there are 15 seconds left for anyone who would like to speak in favor. All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. It's your pleasure.
Could I ask a question of staff? Mr. Roberts, in the staff report, it gives a number of trips per day under the existing RS9 zoning of 1,569. I was just wondering if you had looked at the potential for the... What's in the recommended area plan, which is more dense apartments? Can you just let... Give us a ballpark of how many extra trips that would be compared to the 6,000 that we're talking about for the commercial?
Sure. That probably isn't a reasonable component for the staff report we did not put in there. So, at about 610 units and nine and a half trips, excuse me, 6.65 trips per unit, it comes out to around 4,000. So, about 2,000 less than what they're proposing and what 2,500 trips more than what is allowed in the current zoning. Does that-
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
I probably should address this to you, Mr. King. Have you had a chance to meet with staff since the revisions in the design, and is your recommendation still denial?
Yeah, it is, because it really just boils down to one thing, I think, for staff as we reviewed this, and we've communicated this really to the developer from day one. Our area plan recommends multifamily for this site, and we haven't seen, you know, our west suburban area plan was adopted in October 2018. We haven't seen any change in conditions that would warrant us to look at that recommendation differently. Gary also mentioned to you the large amount of undeveloped commercial that was approved as part of Brookberry Farm further south along this corridor, which hasn't even been touched. So, I think as we look at this, we haven't seen any change in conditions, and there's already existing land zone for commercial use in this corridor. We didn't see that these revisions didn't change our recommendation, because it's a fundamental difference of land use and area plan recommendations. So, no, our recommendation has not changed.
When that was discussed, and I think I remember the discussions, what kind of agreement or acclamation was there in the neighborhood about that recommendation of use of that land? And how long ago was that, and what kind of expectations, therefore, should the people living in Arbers and Brookberry have that that was going to be residential?
Yeah. I might let Kirk weigh in on that, because there were some... We debated this piece of property when we did the last area plan updating. Kirk can probably speak to the specifics on that better so than I can.
Thank you, Aaron. Mr. Bryan, to address your concern, we definitely did have representation in those area plan meetings of folks who lived along the Metal Arc corridor and in the general vicinity, and one thing that we heard over and over were traffic concerns along Metal Arc Drive. We also heard, at least during the time of the area plan, the shopping center at the village, Robin Hood, didn't have as strong of a occupancy rate as Mr. Stimmel addressed in his earlier comments. So, there was a feeling at the time that maybe we don't need more commercial development in the area. Maybe it would be better to have a stepping down of different densities of multifamily to transition from the commercial area to the residential area. Again, as Mr. Roberts said, too, there's 300,000 square feet of commercial on the books just a couple miles south on Metal Arc Drive, so that's basically the genesis of the current recommendation.
How long ago was that, that this was made?
As Mr. King mentioned, it looks like the plan was adopted in the fall of 18, so we were probably working on this in the earlier part of 18.
And then Arbers was beginning to be occupied about that time?
I would have to go back and research that. I don't think the Arbers was starting to get occupied that early.
It definitely hadn't been occupied, because if you look at the area plan map, there's no plating, there are no lots platted on there. The street names are on there, but it wasn't platted yet in the fall of 18. That came sometime, I would think, in early 19.
19, yeah. Meaning that all of the neighbors that moved into that neighborhood would have had that expectation that that was going to be residential in the future?
Theoretically.
Maybe, yeah.
If they looked.
Correct.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Yeah, I would... I am here in real large part because I vow the opportunity to share experience, and as such, there is additional land in the immediate area zone for commercial development. There is land for sale in this area proposed for commercial development. No one's taken it after years. The intensity and the volume of the traffic at Robin Hood and Metal Arc is a real concern and one that, to me, makes it a better adjacency situation to commercial than to residential. I wouldn't want to live on an apartment fronting that street. I am so confident in how conservative Mr. Fensler is with the work he does for the city, that the required improvements that have been agreed to for Robin Hood and Metal Arc are going to be effective. And one question about some of the statements from Mr. Stimmel about the changes from the way this began morphing out relative specifically to special uses. I'd like to ask if special services B has been eliminated from the conversation?
Yes.
Because I would certainly recommend that it not be included. And that's all I've got.
Oh, he was nodding yes to you.
Yeah, many uses were. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Many uses were eliminated in agreement with the neighborhood.
All right, there was one else to speak. I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Any further discussion or someone ready to make a motion?
I would say, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just... I want to seek a little bit... I want to provide a little clarity. I'm not sure how you're going to go, but if you do recommend approval, the recommendation of the plan, y'all can deal with consistency, because that's not germane, what I'm getting to discuss. If you do recommend approval of the plan, it needs to be with the revised conditions as outlined by staff, and that dealt with the signage and that change to the signalization movements that Gary discussed. And if you're so inclined, that doesn't include the Exhibit A conditions that Mr. Stimmel went over, so you would also need to make it contingent upon the staff-revised conditions and the volunteered conditions by the petitioner.
Thank you for that clarification. As we prepare the motion, Mrs. Smith has recused herself from this vote as well.
Could I make a motion?
Yes.
Because of what the staff has outlined and based on the comprehensive plan, I move that the planning board find the request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Bryan, second by Ms. Dunigan. All those in favor? All those opposed?
4-2.
4-2.
What was the vote?
4-2.
So, then, a second motion then, I guess. I move that the planning board recommend denial of W. 3430.
I'll second that.
Be a move by Mr. Bryan, second by-
Mr. Bryan, Mr. Chairman, I just want to-
With condition? What? No, I don't have to say condition.
You don't, because you recommended denial, but you made a motion to vote on the wrong case number. It's F. 1592.
Sorry, yeah. Case number F. 1592. I'll put my glasses on next time. Thank you.
Be a motion by Mr. Bryan, is there a second?
I'd like to second. Could I also make a few comments? My concern here, and I understand that the neighbors are satisfied with the changes that were made, and I can understand that. My concern here is more with the overall impact to the entire area beyond that particular neighborhood, with the traffic impact in particular, this generating so much more traffic, and the fact that the additional commercial, the 300,000 square feet on the other side of Metal Arc, should that be developed, you're creating a very impactful situation for that whole Metal Arc corridor. So, that's my concern. I'd rather see it developed as the area plan recommends.
I would just say, I think with the changes that Stimmel made and the change of the community around it, people's thought process, that's the only reason why I was in opposition. I believe it's fine. The neighborhood is where the people live. That shopping center is about the people. It's not about anyone else but the people, and if they're in favor of what they've got to use, I think we should take into consideration the change in the vote of the people. They have to use that area.
All right.
That's a big difference in the opposition now. They're for it. I think we should consider what they, the people think.
Okay. Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor?
For denial.
For denial. All those in favor? All those opposed?
So, that fails by a vote of 2 to 4.
So, now you'd want to see if there's any motions for approval?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for approval.
And if we could, if you're going to make a motion for approval with the modified staff conditions and the conditions as volunteered by the petitioner.
Okay, motion for approval with the modified staff petitions?
Conditions.
Conditions and the changes.
And the changes offered by the petitioner.
Changes offered by the petitioner.
Is a motion on the floor by Mr. Seagars, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stillman. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Great, got it. Thank you.
All right.
There was a second.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll move to item B.8. That's our public hearing on our Smith Reynolds Airport-Witaker Park Strategic Plan, and Steve Smotherman will be making the presentation on this item.
So, the board found the request to be inconsistent but voted to recommend approval with staff conditions and the petitioner offered conditions. Should be fine.
He has got it?
Got any move on?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
Yes.
Going to try to give you a overview of the Smith Reynolds Airport-Witaker Park Strategic Area Plan. This is the first plan, Strategic Area Plan, that's being done. And the reason for that is that this area, we feel, is... Has an opportunity to have an economic transformation, and that's due to the significant investment that's going to be at Smith Reynolds Airport, which will total 86 million over the next few years, and 120 million investment in Witaker Park. And we think that that investment, along with some other improvements, can spur economic development opportunities for the surrounding areas to that. This plan has some strategies for transforming the area. One is that it promotes economic development. You'll see that through the recommendations. Second is it has recommendations to try to improve the area's appearance, and the third is it's highlighting transportation connections between the three major economic drivers in the area, airport, Witaker Park, and areas of the hospitality district of downtown and the innovation quarter. And you can see that connection there with this visual of the economic development triangle. You can drive to any of these hubs in 10 minutes or less. Witaker Park is only a mile from Smith Reynolds Airport. Its east-west connection is Akron Drive, which is about a mile, so you can be there in probably five minutes or less. Both Witaker Park and the airport are three to four miles from the northern portion of downtown and the innovation quarter. There are four north-south connectors, which are important. There's Liberty Street, US 52, Patterson Avenue, and University Drive, and I would wager that except for peak hour, 5 o'clock traffic, you can get there in 10 minutes. And that is significant because people that want to locate around, near the airport or Witaker Park will be able to conduct all aspects of their business. They can conduct business, meet people either there or at the innovation quarter. They, with the hospitality area, can spend the night there, they can shop there, they can be entertained there. All the activities that they need are right there, and the... One of the Eritropolis study that was commissioned by the chamber a couple of years ago said it was important that all these things be done within 15 minutes or less from their location. This gives you the location of the strategic plan boundaries. It's basically, again, Witaker Park and the airport and neighborhood- Park and the airport and neighborhoods and other uses that immediately adjacent to that, and it contains about 3,000 acres. Existing land use is primarily industrial, which is the lavender or purple area on the map, that's 46% industrial, the yellow areas are low-density residential, or single-family residential, which occupies 21%, and we are proposing no land use changes as part of this strategic area plan. We had very active participation, we had a total of four meetings with almost 250 people in attendance, you can see the photos, and like I said, it was very active and good serious discussion. At the kickoff meeting, we asked some questions of the attendees and asked, received some of their comments, and these were that they wanted to attract aviation-related businesses that pay a living wage and employ area residents, they wanted to provide educational opportunities for residents so they could be employed for higher-paying jobs, they wanted to provide assistance to existing businesses in the area, they also wanted to install sidewalks, street trees, streetlights, and other streetscape improvements, and they wanted to improve the curb appeal and remove unwanted dilapidated buildings. And, as I mentioned, the plan recommendations are trying to reach toward five goals, and they're based on the chamber's Eritropolis study, which means trying to generate an airport city or airport village, their chamber report in 2017, input from the citizens during the process, and also contacts and discussions with the Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., the new name for the chamber, city-county staff, airport staff, and Forsyth Tech staff, and they, there are five overall goals, one, as I mentioned, strengthen the transportation linkages between the three economic drivers, to make the airport and the surrounding area an attractive gateway to the city, particularly for those people that take off and land at the airport, the others to recruit aviation and aerospace-related businesses, fourth is to cultivate the job skills of area residents, and the fifth is to promote existing business programs. In strengthening the transportation linkages, the first step will be to conduct a transportation telecommunications assessment, to determine locations for wayfinding directional signs for visitors, to ensure that the transit routes are in the right spots and are synchronized to work with employer shift changes, and lastly is to provide state-of-the-art telecommunications infrastructure in the area. The second, the other recommendations are garden making the airport an attractive gateway to the city, is to provide a comprehensive streetscape plan for Akron Drive and Liberty Street near the airport, and also to encourage the development of 10,000 to 15,000 square-foot flex space buildings, which you can see a picture of that below on Akron Drive and Liberty Street, very quickly, flex space means the initial tenants can decide how much is that going to be office and how much would that be for warehousing or manufacturing The third major goal is recruit aviation, aerospace-related businesses, we need to encourage local business recruiters to continue to visit aviation-related trade shows and exhibitions, to find out what's going on and hear if any leads of people looking for a new place to locate, there needs to be special marketing materials that promote the three economic drivers so that people understand what's in the area and how they can do business, and lastly, to target startup companies involving drones and electric vertical takeoff and landing vehicles to locate in this area. Another is to cultivate the job skills of area residents, most important, I would think, would be trying to develop a coordinated curriculum between, what's the same, Forsyth County Schools and Forsyth Tech, this could be done between one of the nearby high schools, Carver High School or Atkins, that can work with the Forsyth Tech Aviation Lab, which is currently under construction at the airport, they could take some classes in high school and get some early credits towards getting an aviation maintenance degree. The other is to offer scholarships to people over age 21 that want to obtain retraining opportunities at Forsyth Tech or to earn a new degree, and the third is to encourage the recruitment of area residents to fill these jobs and new jobs that are generated, and to use local incentives to attract employers that pay a living wage, and that's, at this point, typically $15 or more an hour. And then the next steps are to, we anticipate that a public hearing before the city council will be held in early May, and that, one thing you need to be aware of is these recommendations are expected to be taking place over several years, and will take a little time, it won't happen overnight. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Do you want to have any questions or comments?
Is there, is there any proposed timeline for implementation, and if not, where do we start?
Well, first thing to do is to conduct the transportation telecommunications assessment, find out what improvements need to be done, also to do the, hire someone to do the comprehensive streetscape plan, and then at that point, hopefully you'll get some cost estimates and understand what it will take, and it'll be a matter of going to the city council and saying, this is what needs to be done.
Right.
Let's take the next step, or are you willing to take the next step?
Kirk may want to add on a little bit, because we've done a little bit of time, spent a little time fleshing out these recommendations and adding some timelines to them.
Great.
That's great, yeah, so, again, as Mr. King was mentioning, we've actually had very thorough conversations with all the folks who would be in charge of these various objectives and getting them implemented, such as Mark Davidson, Mark Owens from Greater Winston-Salem, Evan Raleigh, and Kyle Haney, who are respectively over economic development in the city and the county, and in the document that Steve handed out at the work session, there is an implementation schedule, that, again, we went through each item in there and kind of came up with a realistic timeframe for those objectives being delivered to the community.
Right.
We've tried to have, as Steve was mentioning, some things that go earlier than others to get some legs under this project, but we're hoping that, you know, maybe five years from now, there's enough momentum on this project that leaders in the area can come back to us and say, it's time to do another airport plan, and let's re-up this thing.
Thank you.
We should point out to the audience that we had extensive time to ask questions about this and hear about it, so the lack of questions doesn't reflect our lack of enthusiasm about the plan.
Yeah, and I've received several calls, and the one thing, I think the one current theme I'm getting from residents is that they don't want to be left behind as this goes forward, that we remember the surrounding community, and the whole purpose of this is to pull the community up and not bring, not leave it behind.
Absolutely, Mr. Leek, again, that's something that we've tried to strike in a balance with this plan of economic development, but economic development that pays a special attention on the folks who are in the area that are going to feel traffic impacts and other impacts from growth, find a way through some of these programs that Steve talked about, to bring those folks along through retraining and prioritization for jobs that become available and things of that nature.
I'm excited if it works, very excited.
You may want to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Okay, open the public hearing, is anyone here?
In support.
In support of this? All right, is anyone here in opposition? No one? Oh, really? Okay. All right, if you would state your name and address and zip code for the record, please.
Eunice Campbell, 5743 and Tietum Drive 27106.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
I would not necessarily say that I'm in opposition, but you have a for or not, so that was the option I had to take with my concerns. I'm speaking today as a Northwood resident, someone who is very concerned that this project would leave out a lot of our citizens, I've looked at this thoroughly, I've printed out the plans myself and read through them, and I know there are a lot of things that are not decided today, but one of the things that is a major concern to a lot of the citizens is the proposed closure of Indiana Avenue at Akron Drive, and that, using the proposed perimeter, perimeter point Boulevard as an alternate route, I would like to say is not a good idea, that is pretty much a service road that turns off of Indiana Avenue and could not hold the traffic, Indiana Avenue is two lanes either direction and a center turning lane, and making people turn on that particular service road, which basically what it is to get to Patterson Avenue is not a good idea. So I do speak in opposition of that as a solution for the extension of Shore Fair, or even if it's even necessary, we have to remember that Indiana Avenue is the direct route from the north side of Winston-Salem to Patterson Avenue and on to the east side, Liberty, so when those type of decisions do come back and you, and have to be thought about, I just want to make sure that you, as a board, understand that we, the Northside residents, use that road daily, and it is a major, it would be like turning, shutting off University Parkway somewhere to us, so I just want to make that perfectly clear, and I have no problem with economic development, we just want to make sure that we are included, there are companies that are, that would be closed off from that area if you, and they, they've expressed that they're concerned, so I stand for, stand for them today and just want to make sure that we are not left behind.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Mr. Leek, if you would just let me respond to that briefly, and then I'm going to have Mr. Fensler from the DOT help us out a little bit, but I do want to say that we've certainly been aware of this potential road closure possibility throughout this project, we've certainly heard citizen comments at the public meetings in concern for this, I will say that the recommendations of this plan aren't predicated on that happening or not happening, that the, the methods for success that we're talking about would be doable either way, that being said, the project, for that road project, is being run by Mr. Fensler and his department, so I will let him share just where that stands right now, the last we heard is that was still in the public sphere, and there were still meetings being held to kind of discuss the fate of that.
Thank you.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, I'll just be real brief about the project, what you've heard is accurate, so today you'll notice a new road facility that is an extension of Shore Fair Drive that currently culminates, it is directly in line with Akron, so there is anticipation that one day we would have access to Akron via the new extension of Shore Fair, it would be an intersection signal, is that signaled at Indiana, so where the closure piece comes in is the railroad, and our assumption that in past history with working with them, they do not allow at-grade rail crossings without the expense of closing another, and so that would result in the closure of Indiana Avenue south of where the two, the new road and Indiana would intersect, but as you heard Kirk mention, we are still in the early stages of that, we do have public input that is still scheduled, unfortunately, with some of the, the snow and rain events we've had recently, we had to cancel one of our meetings, so that's unfortunate, we did have a public meeting scheduled, and we're actively trying to reschedule that, so it is still early on, again, that is something that we are still pushing forward, that connection, but let me do say this, we will, not, it's not just a closure of Indiana Avenue, it's a closure of Indiana Avenue with alternate improvements to handle the rerouted traffic and other improvements as far as Dominion Street perimeter, a lot of different things to kind of accommodate the rerouted traffic, so I just want to call your attention to that, it's not a closure of Indiana, but it's a closure of Indiana with improvements.
Just a point of clarification, if you would, in addition to the public meetings and public involvement you're going to have on the planning of this, any future closure of that would be subject to a public hearing in front of city council, correct?
That is correct.
Good.
Good clarification, thank you.
All right, thank you. I think, I guess...
Could I just piggyback a little bit on what was said, looking at the language that's in the plan related to the closure of Indiana, I just want to know from staff, you're not, you're not proposing that, you're just reporting that that's something that's been considered, right?
That's correct.
So, if you could make that clear, if there are any, if there's anything, you might take another look at the language is what I'm suggesting, and if there's anything there where you want to clarify that, maybe you should do that.
That's a fair point.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there's nine, nine and a half minutes left.
Do you have one other person who wanted to speak?
My name is Janet Robinson, my address is 3120, Flanders Drive, 27105, I am living in the Northwood area, Estates area, and a lot of the planes that have now started coming over our neighborhood are really noisy, and last night when I was laying in my bed, I don't know whether they was working on the engine or whatever, on an airplane or whatever, but it is a concern of mine, when I first moved there in 1977, Smith Reynolds was there, and I remember that noise and all those planes coming over my area, well, I adjusted to that, and then after Smith Reynolds like broke up and they didn't have all of these planes coming in and out, but now hearing this plane that y'all want to bring in all of this at Smith Reynolds Airport now, and I'm thinking about my neighborhood and the impact that it's going to have, now I was here in the other meetings and heard y'all talking about Meadowlark and the noise and the traffic and all that, and they made concessions for that neighborhood, but it seems like, to me, it's like it's a goal for our neighborhood, and they are not concerned about what's going to happen to our neighborhood with the noise and the traffic and all that, so that's a really big concern of mine, like I said, I've been there since 1977, and I would like to leave my home to my children or my grandchildren, you know, but that's one of the concerns of mine, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, about seven and a half minutes left.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to address that, as Steve mentioned in the presentation, there's certainly language in the plan about considering the impacts of any expansions to existing businesses or new businesses in the area on the residential areas, many of which are actually historic and good community assets that we want to preserve and have a lot of long-term residence. I do want to point out one thing, just so everyone is clear, we're not talking about a return to commercial passenger flights at Smith Reynolds Airport, really, where we see this going is, again, as Steve mentioned, things such as drones, other new flight technology, certainly aviation maintenance, there's a lot of that that's actually going on right now, just because of the ability to land and taxi 2737s tip-to-tip, which is really good for such a small urban environment, and also a lot of training and education and things of that nature, so we don't anticipate that this is going to be the same level of noise or intensity as back in 1977, as the citizen mentioned, when Smith Reynolds was taking in a lot of passenger flights.
Thank you.
I had something real quick.
Yes.
Our goal is not necessarily increase the number of flights at Smith Reynolds, is to make, is improve its impression for the people that do fly, I don't, as Kirk said, I don't anticipate any significant increase in flights, there will be no commercial airlines, but what we want to do is make the experience, people that do fly in, to have a pleasant experience when they leave the airport, and have, there'll be curb appeal between there, Wittaker Park and downtown, so they have a good experience, so they may want to locate in the area, so that's our, that's our primary goal.
Thank you. So there is a little more time left, if anyone else wants to speak in opposition. All right, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What's your pleasure?
I move approval of the Smith Reynolds-Wittaker Park...
Strategic area plan.
Strategic area plan, excuse me.
A second. Motion by Mr. Stillman, second by Mr. Hicks, any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose the same side? That's unanimous.
And just note for the record that... And just note for the record that Mr. Seagars has left.
Right. Thank you all for coming out and for your comments.
All right, that brings us to staff report. And I had in my notes to, to tell you that we have our, our second meeting of our Rinaldo Road, Doral Drive interchange plan next Thursday. Desmond was going to tell you about our upcoming cases, then I was going to give you a preview of work session.
We've been sitting here talking the whole meeting.
And then at 5:18, I got an email from the city manager that basically all public meetings of, well, public and staff meetings of 20 or more people are canceled effective immediately.
Ooh.
So as you can imagine, I haven't had a chance to really talk with the manager's office and see what this means. But so Board of Adjustment, we've got two of those. We've got HRC. We've got some things coming up there. Public Art, Community Appearance Commission. Obviously, you have your work session and public hearings coming up. So just got this. This is brand-new information, and so we'll need to work closely with the manager's office to see kind of how we need to manage this and how we keep folks in the loop about what is going on. But that is the information as I have it right now, is that those meetings will be canceled for the foreseeable future.
Would that also include the site visit?
It's 20 or more.
It's not 20 or more, but it is close quarters.
It may be a recommended opportunity to cancel that. We can certainly go out and get pictures, and we can compile those into a show, which we can send to the board members. That way, it keeps you out of confined quarters. We may want to do that, just trying to use some best practices, as I think, as the manager noted in his email, and I think as folks have seen in communications from the public health director, Joshua Swift, and from the CDC, you know, this sort of social distancing, managers recommend that, in addition to all the other best practices, the washing of hands, the covering your mouth when you cough, all those kind of things. So it might be recommended that at least until this, you know, I think this is all intended to lessen the spread of the coronavirus. So until it is dissipated, we may want to practice, we may want to practice some of those, as Mr. Leake is demonstrating.
I'm sorry.
We may want to demonstrate, we may want to practice some of those techniques.
And what I would say is keep in mind, and again, I think, I think it's very fluid at this point. I mean, hopefully, we'll be able to discuss it as a staff tomorrow, get some additional clarification. But again, if our zoning meeting in April, you know, is more than likely going to be canceled, I don't know that it's even, it may be a moot point to go on the site visits at this point, because again, we may be holding several months' worth and having like 25 cases on one meeting. Who knows? But so I will communicate information as I receive it to the board, just to keep you guys in the loop. But as again, as I say, we just got that at 5:18, so that is.
So we're not in trouble for this meeting?
No, we, we checked and double-checked on this meeting, and we were good on this meeting.
Okay.
So staff is hearing this for the first time as well, so we'll, we'll need to kind of digest this and make, make plans accordingly. But we'll keep the board in the loop on this.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and I will tell you, iPad update, so obviously, the coronavirus has not subsided since we spoke last. Our IS department is trying to make some alternate arrangements to acquire some iPads to get those here a little sooner. So hopefully, we'll be able to move forward on that and get out of the printing business. And the last thing, you've seen our, our video at the beginning of your meetings about the census. Those mail-outs are coming, so be on the lookout for those and certainly let folks know as well. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Is there anything else that we need to speak on? All right.
I have our motion to adjourn. We want to stay healthy.